Meeting for Thursday, March 18th is now on board. Let's have a moment of silence and then stand to the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You call the roll. Frederick McCoy. Andrew Kennedy.
Here.
Ms. Sherbrooke.
Here.
Gillis Wiggum. Bernadette James.
Here.
Marie Davis.
Here.
Brian Fulton.
Here.
Kimberly Jackson.
Here.
Arthur Hamilton.
Here.
Sir Chairperson, Congress present. Jeff, question, do both alternates have voting rights?
Um, yes, I'd ask for tonight's meeting because both Mr. McCoy and Mr. Wiggum will not be present tonight. And also, Ms. James, her term expires, and that I was going to our council meeting, I believe, next week. So because of those voids, we would ask that both first and second alternate have voting rights for tonight's meeting.
Okay, let the record reflect back. Any additions, deletions to the agenda?
No additions.
Uh, if there's no objection, I'll have a motion for adopting the agenda for today.
Second.
Call the roll. Andrew Kennedy.
Yes.
Ms. Sherbrooke.
Yes.
Marie Davis.
Yes.
Brian Fulton.
Yes.
Kimberly Jackson.
Yes.
Arthur Hamilton.
Yes.
Anyone who's voting, motion approved. Okay, approval of the minutes from February 27th. Motion.
I make the motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Oh, call the roll. Andrew Kennedy.
Yes.
Ms. Sherbrooke.
Yes.
Marie Davis.
Yes.
Brian Fulton.
Yes.
Kimberly Jackson.
Yes.
Arthur Hamilton.
Yes.
Anyone who's voting, motion approved. Okay, uh, no presentations, I assume. Okay, no unfinished, no unfinished business?
That's right.
Okay, move to new business.
Yes, for the record, Jeff Gang, planning zone administrator. Under new business, tonight, we have one item. That's SP 1404, an application from Rapids Holdings LLC requesting a site plan amendment for the Rapids Water Park, including the construction of an 800-square-foot, 65-seat teepee bar structure and authorization to sell alcohol throughout the Rapids Water Park. And it's located at 6566 North Military Trail on roughly 24.3 acres. Also joining us tonight, there are two representatives from Rapids Water Park. I've been working most closely with Mr. Christopher Jones, architect. But, of course, after staff presentation, if they want to add anything else, and if they have, the board has any questions, as I was here, free to ask those questions, staff or the group here tonight for Rapids. Uh, so moving on from this slide, this is just a case number and information that was just written in the record. So here is narrow view, just to give you an orientation. This is Interstate 95, this is B line highway. This is Blue Island Boulevard. This is Fort Worth Street. North and south is North Military Trail. And the red box here indicates location of Rapids Water Park. So panning in a little closer, you can see the orientation of the Rapids Water Park here. You start seeing some of the slide structures. Park in the south. Additionally, to the west is Lone Pine Golf Course, as well as residential units. To the east is RV Park. Directing to the north and to the south are commercial retail and office type uses. And again, the red box indicates location. So thanks to Google Earth, we'll get in even closer. And the location that the red box shows here is the proposed location for the new 800-square-foot teepee hub. It will be adjacent to, this is the wave pool. And again, this is north-south Military Trail. So going from the pretty color area to the black and white site plan, just to give you that orientation again, this is the area that was just shown, except this is north, to the left would be north. So this is Military Trail, north to south. This is the upper image, the lower image, north is up. So this is the wave pool to the left, and this is the new 800-square-foot teepee structure. It's supposed to have 65 seats. So this is the architectural location of the teepee hub itself. Maybe we can start seeing the seating pattern, the main bar area of the wave pool would be to the right of this image. And then elevations of the, the structure itself. Again, compared to the entire site, it's a relatively small structure, it's only 800 square feet. But just wanted to give you the proper orientation. So before we get into the final staff recommendation, just wanted to read over a few items on the staff report. Okay, so, um, again, the address is 6566 North Military Trail. It's PCN 5642, 4236, 12000, 0020. Property size approximately 24.3 acres. Existing uses, uh, the Rapids Water Park. Future land use is recreational, and zoning is recreation and open space districts. Again, as previously described, to the north is general commercial use, as well as to the south. To the east is, essentially, some general industrial, but that's the vacation and RV resort. And to the west is Lone Pine Golf Course and Lone Pine Residences. Uh, so this is, kind of here's to the, the crux of the issue for the background, which is letter F. Rapids Holdings LLC, owner of the Rapids Water Park, has requested approval of a site plan amendment in order to construct an 800-square-foot, 65-seat teepee bar within the existing Rapids Water Park. Additionally, a request has been made to authorize alcohol sales throughout the Rapids Water Park facility. If this authorization is provided, Rapids Holdings LLC will pursue, pursue a four COP license. Four COP license is a state-issued license allowing for consumption of beer, wine, and liquor on premises. Rapids Water Park does not currently sell alcoholic beverages. Then, according to the project narrative that was provided by the applicant, Rapids Water Park is seeking to obtain a liquor license in response to increasingly frequent requests from its customers, and is part of its long-term strategy to increase food and beverage sales, and to attempt to maintain its attendance base in the increasingly competitive Florida leisure market. And, of course, the board members can read on. That was included in the narrative, which is in the full staff packet. So the staff recommendation for SB 1404. Staff is, do not receive any concerns at this point in association with the site plan amendment or request for alcohol sales throughout the Rapids Water Park. Staff advises that the Planning and Zoning Board recommend approval of the site plan amendment to the city council with the three following conditions. And the three conditions that are shown on the screen are all code-based conditions, it's nothing out of the ordinary. Condition number one is that construction must be initiated within 18 months. I know that won't be a problem, as the applicant is ready to keep going as soon as possible. Additionally, number two, all future advertising must adhere to the city code ordinances, section 31-554, which is advertising near Beach. This requires if a city or municipality has used an advertisement, they must stay near Beach. Finally, condition number three, any new lighting elements must be installed in a manner that prevents light trespass from the property.
So at this point, I'll open up the board comments. Does the applicant want to make any comments? Or, sir?
Thank you. Uh, my name's Chris Jones, I'm the architect for the project and the agent for the, for the owners. With me is Mr. Karen Burke, the owner of the LLC Holdings. To the side is Brian McGrath, who is the general manager of the Rapids Water Park and has been so for 30 years. And John Paxman, who's our liquor license attorney. In case you had any other questions concerning the liquor license itself. Primarily, what we've just been over is, is the crux of what we're trying to do here is to create facilities within the park to be able to sell liquor to help keep our park competitive with all the major parks. Wet n Wild, SeaWorld, Quokka, Universal's, they're all the same. So it's not unusual for parks to have liquor. In fact, they all do, we're one of the few, or one of the only ones that don't have liquor in the park. And so with the increasing competitive market, we're trying to create an atmosphere that then becomes more resort-like in order to help bring in more, more business as a whole, and especially tourism, to the area, which we have done, to get people to come into the park and help generate sales and keep the current attendance from lacking and being competitive with the other parks. If we don't keep up with anything that we do, then people tend to go to those other, to the other parks that we have. And Rapids, for over the years and the way they've been developed, is we, we tend to always do a top-notch, high-quality, safe environment. And it's been like that, and in conjunction of that, we try to keep adding new rides, new facilities, and things to the park. So it's something fresh for people to come to. It's not always the same thing, it's just something new. But we have new rides, last year we added some new pavilions that we hope to get group sales in, to bring more business and, and out of Miami, and the south of us, to come and have gatherings and audience from that standpoint. We put in a retail facility, we've added private cabanas, we added a new ride last year, which is the Flow Rider. So we're constantly adding things, keeping the park up to date with, with the newest and best things that are out there. And again, this just helps us cement our place in the community and to help business grow. With that said, I'll let you all, if you have any questions, we'd be more happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We may have some more questions for you as we go through it. Any comments from the board, Mr. Cole?
Yes. Just reading over, and it's just some concerns or I haven't heard, and if it is. I'm interested in the protection of the city when it comes to the liability dealing with alcohol and kids around. Will the park have some type of waiver? Because if there's, for example, if there's a parent that come to your park, and another individual who may have drank too much, doesn't have full, good judgment, is the city protected against, or is there waivers that are signed by those visitors out the park to protect the city? So if, if, uh, parent or object to the drinking, is there protection? And of a parent, or the concern of a parent to say, I don't want drinking around my children, or I want drinking around my kids? Are the people who are drinking, are they going to be walking all around the park? That's one of the things I'd like to, you know, know that's in place. I don't know fully the law of it, but just the protection of the city for one. And the concern that the, that staff said there is no concern at this time, what would happen if there's a concern that does arise to the forefront? What mechanism is in place to protect or to deal with those concerns if they do arise? Is there something like that in place?
Um, I'll, I'll answer part of your question for now. I think that I have to be answered by the Rapids group. As far as liability for the city's concern, I believe that since it's on private property, liability would be assumed by Rapids themselves. If the situation were to arise, that a parent disagreed with alcohol sales or alcohol use, they would really just have to choose to go elsewhere. The current proposal is to allow alcohol sales at this specific location, at the teepee bar, but it could happen throughout the park. And other than waiting in lines without an alcoholic beverage, or, you know, obviously within the rising cells or in the wave pool, there's basically free-range alcohol throughout the park.
But the city's protected, basically.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I got to answer, ask a question for, for the Rapids. Is there going to be a certain confinement for adults that want to drink? I'm sure they're not going to be walking around the entire park with beer bottles in their hand.
Yes, I, maybe I should introduce myself, just, my name's Karen Burke, and I'm the owner of the entity that owns and operates the Rapids. And just by way of personal background, from 1989 to 2005, I was the chairman and CEO of Six Flags, which we owned and operated 40 parks throughout both the United States and Europe, Canada, and Mexico. And amongst those very large theme parks, we also operated several water parks adjacent to or as part of those parks. So this is not a new issue to me in terms of having alcoholic beverage sales in the parks, or controlling them, and still maintaining a very family-oriented environment. And I'm happy to answer a lot of those questions. Very specifically, I think he answered properly, this is obviously private property, and so I don't think there should be any concern on the part of the city about any kind of liability to the city, regardless of what might occur. You should also understand that we take the safety very, very seriously. I mean, you know, if we think about priorities for our business, you know, safety is one, two, and three. I mean, there is, you know, we operate to the very highest standards, not only here, but at the other 10 facilities that we operate throughout the United States, all of which also have liquor licenses. As far as the environment, and I, and I would say this, we have a very substantial investment in the Rapids, and we're continuing to make investments, and so we have a significant economic interest in the safe operation and the reputation, and to avoid any incidents, either in the water or otherwise. So we have very significant economic stake, as well as, you know, a moral obligation in that regard. As far as the manner in which we operate, I, I don't want to leave the impression that our request for a liquor license and initially to build this teepee bar is because we in any way want to change the nature or atmosphere of the park, and certainly not to create, you know, a floating bar throughout the, the park. That, that's not the intent here. And I think Mr. Jones was describing every major park in Florida, every one of the Disney parks, every one of the SeaWorld parks, every one of the Universal parks, even Legoland, which I think most people would identify as a young children's park, all with liquor licenses. And so we are at a competitive disadvantage in terms of that position. And given the stature of the Rapids Water Park, we do compete with those parks for tourists. And so all we're really trying to do here is to provide adult customers an opportunity in a controlled way to purchase an alcoholic beverage. And so I, I just want to be clear, this is not an attempt to create any kind of a nightclub atmosphere or, or anything that would be negative in terms of a family activity. We, we are not going to allow any alcohol in any of the attractions, so there's no opportunity to walk into the wave pool with a drink, or to be floating down the lazy river, or to go up slides. So this is not going to be a situation in which we're having alcohol everywhere. We will comply with every state and local rule in terms of the sale of the alcohol, in terms of people being appropriate age, we'll control that very carefully. I can tell you in the 40 parks that I operated at Six Flags and the 11 that we currently operate, we never had one incident in connection with this. And we have not had complaints from parents in terms of, you know, the presence of this. Just like I think if you think back on your experiences to the extent that you've gone to a Disney park, any of their water parks, Wet n Wild, you, you probably personally haven't come away saying, God, that's strange, or I didn't like that, or, you know, maybe somebody did. But I, I don't think typically people would even think about it. And so the same procedures that they operate under, I'm not going to say they're identical, because every company does things a little bit differently. But by and large, the industry standards and the way in which we'll conduct this are going to be very standard across the board, as those, as those parks do. And they all have that same flexibility. They make their decisions about where they'll sell the alcohol from, and what areas you're allowed to have it. And basically, to come back to the question we was asking, no, no comments. If, to the extent that we were to see a situation, and we would, you know, we would address it, we would make a decision to make a change. I mean, we have a vested interest in it. We're subject to, you know, the police surveillance, the ABC, and everything else. So it's not like this happens, you know, without regulation.
Any other question?
Yes.
I mean, let's, let's just continue down this way, Miss Brooks.
Go forward.
Okay, James?
Um, and my question is going to be directed at staff. I'm just a little concerned why that's even part of site plan approval to authorize the sale of alcohol.
Yeah, it, this was an interesting situation. The site plan approval was really for an amendment to add a new structure, the 800-foot teepee bar. Being that the zoning and future land use has a recreational appropriation to it, that's what triggered the additional approval that will ultimately need to come from city council in order for the facility to pursue the four COP license.
So we're going to see this more in the future from different places, like say the marina, when they start, you know, filling in those leased areas, we're going to have on our site plans?
It's a unique situation, and we probably would not see it very often. In the marina itself, the zoning and future land use would currently provide for restaurants, which would allow for that alcohol license. There, there are some constraints associated with that, but the situation that we're looking at now, considering now, is, is kind of unique.
Okay, so essentially what he was saying is that the city doesn't have any liability, because it's all private property. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, my other question was, I was just kind of concerned, because I know they have younger people that work there. So you have younger people that work there, so I guess they would not work in the areas that would serve the alcohol? And also, because it is in a water park, how do you determine, like, how do you ID when you're in a water park? When stuff is up in a locker, they're going to issue some type of bracelet or something, color-coded, when they come in? I'm just curious.
My understanding for serving alcohol, I believe you have to be at least 18 years of age.
Oh, 18 to serve, 21 to drink?
I believe in order to serve, you have to be 18. However, there may be younger employees. As far as the operational, specific details, as far as, you know, if something, you know, wristbands, that, you know, I don't know if that's a procedure that occurs in their other parks?
I, I would like to know, because we are residents and we do frequent, you know, Rapids.
I mean, I can just assure you that we'll be in complete compliance with appropriate age and everything else for the people that serve, and appropriate training for them. As far as anyone that wants to purchase alcohol, if they, you know, need to show their ID, they have to show their ID, and they're not going to get served unless they show ID. And, you know, we do at times have systems at certain parks where we use the wrist bracelets, but, you know, we're not going to shortcut that, because somebody's wallet's in the locker, if they want to purchase alcohol, they're going to have to show appropriate ID.
Okay, I'm not going to harp on that, that point, since it's kind of unique. I think the teepee expansion is a great idea, so those are my comments.
James?
I have a couple, a couple of comments about your comments. I know you're trying to stay competitive, how far away is your nearest competitor?
Well, it really depends how you define the market. So for instance, for group business, which we think is important, and, and I would point out that I think our efforts to attract groups, and what we mean by groups would be, think of any company, think of hospital organizations, city that want to bring out anywhere from 50 to 1,000 people for a group outing, and, and, you know, catered meal, and to enjoy the park, is an important, an important part of the business. And it's a part of the business that actually will bring more exposure to Riviera Beach in terms of companies that we're aggressively now soliciting. I've added an entire staff of salespeople, Park never used to try to do this type of business. This is a standard business that we do at all our parks. And it's an important business for Disney and others. And so there's ancillary benefits to bringing those types of groups. We'll be competing with everybody for that, Lion Country, which has a liquor license, Zoo, which has a liquor license. So it isn't just competition for pure water parks, or even theme parks, Seaquarium. So think of just about any attraction or area that would do catered outings. We certainly will be competing very close locally for that. You would be surprised, but even currently, probably over 20% of our business comes from Miami. That's a good distance, and, and a fair distance from the north. So we're, we're actually, you know, we're a strong draw. So, you know, we look at it and we feel we compete with Orlando. And where we compete mostly with Orlando is any tourism into southern Florida as a decision to make, as to whether they want to drive from Palm Beach County, or Dave, or, or wherever, all the way to Orlando, and we are close by. And so one of the things we want to be is, we want to be able to offer to the tourist travel, traveler that, you know, the full experience, kind of the vacation experience. And if you even think about that, if you were to go to the Breakers, you go to a lot of other places where there are cabanas and there's waitress service, we've added the cabanas, and so, you know, to be in a position where we can do that. So we've got a lot of competition for these segments, and... So we've got a lot of competition for these segments and we just wanna be on the even playing field.
Couple more things. What are your, it's been a long time since I've been out there. I don't remember the hours. What are your hours now?
Primarily, Brian, we're ten.
Ten to seven during the summer months. During spring break, it's ten to five.
Okay. And are you going to extend those hours once you start alcohol?
Not typically because we're not, you know, lighted really, so we don't plan it currently. I mean, our hours, you know, we certainly don't wanna restrict our hours, but this is not about changing our operating hours. This is about what we'll be doing in our normal operating hours.
I don't mind telling you, I'm very concerned about the alcohol component. And I'm not a tiki lover, but, you know, Riviera Beach has done a lot of work, really hard to clean things up and now to add this alcohol component is something that's, you know, that's alcohol-free. It's troubling considering where it is and I know adults go. What percentage of your, what percentage of your business do you know for children versus adults?
I guess I would be standing on one foot here. I'd be guesstimating it, but I'm sure, I'm sure.
Obviously, the weekend, the weekend, it's more families where during the weekdays, it's not as much, but the weekends probably close to fifty-fifty on families, mom, dad and a couple of kids. But on the weekdays.
Quite parents.
Yeah.
And do you feel you're lagging behind now?
Oh, I don't think there's any question that, you know, when we pitch group business and they ask whether we can, you know, have beer in the group areas for totally adult events and we have to say, "No, we can't," but, you know, if that union group can go to, as far as doing that work, if I'm, you know, starting to now advertise as I am with billboards on ninety-five, which by the way, as you can see in the thing advertising Riviera Beach, I'm competing with the hotels around here, I'm competing with everybody. So I need to be in a position where I'm on even playing field. And, you know, frankly, while I respect the concerns, I guess having been in the industry for twenty-five years, you know, having been the chairman and CEO of a major theme park company where we did this responsibly and where I don't think anybody thinks that the Six Flags park is an irresponsible operation and certainly Disney, which is the gold standard and, you know, nobody gives that a thought. So I sort of, for one, don't, wouldn't understand why we would be in a different position than those companies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hamilton? Yeah, I'll come back to Ms. Jackson if she has any other questions.
Thank you, Chair. In nineteen ninety-five, the license were, liquor license was given up. Does anyone know the reason why?
It had nothing to do with anything in the operation. I think that the owner at that time just decided that they, it wasn't an area that they wanted to do anymore. I don't think there was a particular reason. So it wasn't, it wasn't that something was going wrong and there was any problem. And I would say just the opposite. I think the board should have some comfort that the park had and sold under a liquor license for two seasons without incident.
The passages indicate and to be implied that the sale of alcohol will be throughout the park, not necessarily restricted to the tiki.
Well, I think, I think it was the question that was asked by Ms. James that, you know, it is a little odd, you know, to have the liquor license per se be part of zoning. I mean, so what we're, you know, one of the things we're here for is the tiki bar, but we wanna, you know, be forthright to say that, you know, we may sell alcohol out of other food and beverage outlets at the park. And we are a business that changes and shapes over time. So just like the Disney parks, the Universal parks or the other parks, it's the same thing. They may dispense alcohol out of more than one restaurant, they have cabanas and you have waitress service. So there will be, you know, there will be sales of alcohol that are not just from the tiki bar. But again, that doesn't mean we're gonna be, you know, trying to sell alcohol on every square foot of the property. I mean, it's just, we wanna make sure that we're clear about, you know, what the license would allow us to do.
As Ms. James indicated, you probably already made projections of, as you indicated, the increase of your rules based upon the sale of such. However, you indicated to her you have not identified the method of how you're gonna ID. And to me, if you're making plans to increase rules, and maybe that's just for adult functions when the park is closed or?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, just to be clear, I mean, anybody that's, you know, served alcohol is gonna have to provide ID that they're of age to purchase. And so, you know, I wanna again maintain the flexibility. Sometimes we handle it differently with a group. If we have a large group, we may wristband so everyone is ID'd on the way in. So it's just, I, you know, it's just, it can vary depending on what we're doing during the particular function. But I can't stress enough that we're gonna be religious about supervising this, not only the sale of it, you know, and who's selling on, you know, our customers, but also, you know, maintaining the family integrity of the park.
Ms. Karen Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Ms. Jackson, you okay?
Yes, I'm good.
Sure.
Just a couple of questions that, one, you said that all nine of your other parks have liquor, well, ten of different parks.
Ten others, yeah.
Okay, so you have a total of eleven. Okay, they all have liquor license?
Yes.
Any incidents of?
No.
Okay. Do you have security at the water park?
Yes.
Okay. And they would be part of the ID process and control process?
And as required, I mean, I think what we'll have is obviously well-trained bartenders, you know, who probably be the front line on that, but there's no question, and we have, you know, a strong security presence that, you know, as needed, we, so we're in good shape there.
Would this be run by the water park, by Rapids?
Absolutely.
Or by, okay, not by an outside contractor?
No, no, we control all of that.
Okay. I noticed an advertisement that you're opening this Saturday. When do you plan to start the construction of the tiki?
Well, you know, we obviously can't, as prudent businessmen, start the construction until, you know, we have the approval from the city, which would require, you know, this board's approval and then subsequently the city council and I don't know when we would be on their docket, but hopefully in April, if we were to be lucky enough to have that opportunity. And so we have hope to begin construction in the fall, but, you know, obviously we need to go through the process. So, but we have a window where we could construct the tiki bar from the end of April, you know, till around June when the business picks back up. So we do have a window where we can do that.
Okay. Have you given any thought to how many jobs this addition is gonna create in the city?
Well, you know, I mean, by definition, there'll be several spots. I mean, I don't know that I actually counted them, but.
I estimate between twelve and fifteen for the making.
Okay.
Plus the construction jobs.
Okay.
No other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Sure. Yeah, Mr. Colton?
Yes. Just had, I, the first question when I asked, this one is dealing with staff and I didn't get a clear understanding of it. Where on the item ages and no staff concern has been provided at this time? Well, my question was if and when there was, there were concern from staff, is there a mechanism in place that would be able to be negotiated between staff and the Rapids? And how would you or how would staff know if there is ever a concern that comes up? But that particular portion of it, no concern at this time, but is there something in place to provide for if they're concerned in negotiation, what the remedies would be between staff and Rapids and under?
Right. Currently, when the staff part is being prepared, there were no comments provided by the police department or fire department. Both of those departments would obviously be on the forefront of any review or any potential instances as they would like to see the impacts, much more than the engineering department or zoning department. As far as a condition to negotiate at a later point in time, there is no condition that's currently being discussed now. So there are obviously legal parameters that the business would have to operate in if not all before COP alcohol license was received, but there would be no additional condition.
So if you have concerns later on, there's no mechanics that is in place to work that out? At this time, there's nothing in progress.
There's no clear conditions that are being put on the staff analysis or likely would be put on city council approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would just like to emphasize, based on the liability issues that have arisen, just to be clear, this is a private company, we're doing private property, so they bear the brunt of all liability, not the city.
Also, we have a code enforcement department that if there were violations, code enforcement would assume some of the responsibility, do any kind of corrective action. So I think there is a mechanism in place if something goes awry to address it. So no other questions from the board? I call for a motion.
I think we need to read the entire.
Yes.
If you're gonna make the motion, read the entire.
Yeah.
You have a statement?
Yeah, just.
Just.
I make a motion that we approve the application from Rapid Odin LLC requesting a site plan amendment for the Rapids Water Park, including the construction of an eight hundred square foot, sixty-five seat tiki bar structure and authorization to sell alcohol throughout the Rapids Water Park located at sixty-five, sixty-six North Military Trail on roughly twenty-four point three acres.
Second.
Want to call the roll? Edward Canuti?
Yes.
Ms. Sherry Brooks?
Yes.
Marie Davis?
No.
Brian Colton?
Yes.
Kimberly Jackson?
Yes.
Arthur Hamilton?
No.
Much of chances for yes to no, we remove Davis and Mr. Hamilton at the second. Thank you. Appreciate your time and good luck. Since there's no public comments, we'll go to correspondence.
No correspondence provided.
No correspondence. Any comments from planning and zoning board? Ms. Colton? Brooks?
No.
Ms. James? Davis?
No.
Jackson? Mr. Hamilton?
Just wanted to say thanks to staff for emailing certain things concerning training. However, I'm not sure if that was a question, but I do wanna say thank you.
Project update?
No updates at this time. Yes, as you may have not be aware, the recent vote in eleven passed with seventy-four?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-three percent to recommend city charter, so Marina project's moving forward.
And you said the meeting is scheduled for the twenty-seventh, but possible?
At this point in time, I think it's probably a forty percent chance we could be done on the twenty-seventh. You know, hopefully we'll be to an optimal time.
Hey. Move to adjourn?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, just now.
I have a quick question and I'm not sure if this should go to staff or be, we have a, in fact, chair, and I guess I should've said vice-chair, excuse me. We have a chair that needs to be out of town periodically, and I was curious if we could send some communication, telephone line, et cetera, to serve him or any member who might be able to be here, telepathic, maybe that's such a term, or via telephone? Is that possible? Is that something to be considered that way? I mean, I have to go off to.
We like your book.
Technology definitely exists to do new things like that. I don't know the legality about actually being at the meeting versus just attending via Skype or some sort of video conferencing technology. It's an interesting idea, but what? Yeah, it'd be interesting to look at that further.
We are moving into the twenty-first century and I doubt that that would be the appropriate question to get a response from you, of course, and Ms. Studd?
Mr. Chair, generally what I've seen in the past and I can look further into it is that good cause has to be provided because the meetings are open to the public and the public is an opportunity not only to be heard, but be heard in the presence of the committee council board. So generally, from what I've seen from past case law, generally good cause has to be shown. So for example, someone is in a hospital and unable to attend for some reason or something of that matter, but generally it's not a method that's used on occasions, something because someone cannot make a meeting. It generally has to be good cause on why they cannot make the meeting.
Move to adjourn?
Second. So we'll.
I'm listening to you now.
We need a second.
We need a second.
We do need a second. Okay, Bruce, Dave, a second. You all have a wonderful evening.
Me too. I'm happy everyone that goes to all the water parks and know about all of the Tiki and Six Flags.
I was gonna ask them if they thought that.
I know. I know what they don't think.